It's now six thirty, so call the meeting of the school board to order. First order of business this evening is the approval of the minutes of May 12. You can see those minutes in the packet. Is there any discussion about the minutes, any issues, anyone's on? Yeah, we can. We have, we have a quorum and it.
Yeah, but I can't vote for that.
It's fine, it's just, it's the majority of the. Okay, I have a motion from Joe to approve the minutes.
A second?
Second with Tammy, thank you Tammy. And any further discussion?
Nope, I have nothing. Nice job.
I will take a roll call because we have one. Remote participants, Tammy?
Aye.
Joe? Oh, all right. That's fine, Jeff, you can.
I'm standing.
Okay, so we, it passes. Next order of business is the approval of the non-public minutes of May 12.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public minutes of May 12 as presented.
Thank you, Joe. Ten of those minutes? Tammy?
Yes.
Hi, Joe. All right. Right? And that motion carries. Communications, any correspondence?
No, only that you have in your packet, a couple notices and minutes from a training that we went to on May 11th, so we're sharing that information. It's very, it's very interesting.
Business administrator.
I have a couple of things. In your packet, there's the letter from the auditors to the board. This is the audit from June 30, 2020. It's just the final, final reports. I actually brought in a couple. Final reports. Anyway, it's just anything, there was no significant findings. I mean, they kept us, because they actually came in last October to do the audit, but we're talking with them until we get the final reports. So if you, you all had a copy in the packet, we have any questions, but nothing out of the ordinary. Again, if you have any questions on the audit itself. That's in there. The other thing I just wanted to. A couple of other things. So we're working right now on ESER 2 and ESER 3 and all the requirements that we need to do to get to the state to access the funds. And there's a lot of different timelines. We had another meeting today. There's a template that we're, we're working on right now that has to be to the Department of Ed by June 1st because they have to do a big report to the feds to get the rest of the money for the state. Once they get that, then they can allocate it out. There's a lot of assurances and forms we have to fill out. And we will be having, and we started with the administration, they've actually talked at some of the staff meetings about how we can use this money. We know right now for ESER 2, we have 232,000. For ESER 3 or ARP ESER, I think it's another 500,000. Is about. And I think we might have given you a copy, but we can give you another copy of the different areas of spending. A certain percentage has to go towards learning loss. So how people are using that might be like for next year for having after-school programs. A lot of schools might be hiring more staff. Maybe some different programs that they're bringing in. But anyway, so there's a lot of things for that. Probably our biggest thing will be facilities. There's a lot of rules on the facilities and anything. If we are going to do some facilities funding, we just heard today, there's a whole nother template we have to fill out to the DOE to get approval first of anything. So then again, one of the big things that we've been discussing is the high school and the air systems and controls down at the high school. But anyway, it's all has to go through approval before we can, even if we get the money, we have to have everything approved before we use the money. Things like windows, we discussed a little of that at last. And we have to have a lot of discussions and try to generate ideas and then have those approved. Another piece of that is our reopening plan for next year. So every school has to present to the DOE by June 23rd of the opening plan for next year. The DOE knows there's going to be a lot of changes from June 23rd to the day we open school in September. But it's just like a rough draft. And there's public engagement that's involved for that. So we're going to probably put that on our next agenda to just start talking about that. And Judy would talk a little bit about the committee at the school that's been working on that. So just a lot of steps, a lot of dates. The other thing I've been working on is for the elementary schools, the HVAC system here, that was going to be funded through a bond. So we're working with the bond council. There's a lot of paperwork, Tammy, you know, with the town, I'm sure they go through the same thing. There's a bond sale in July. We're working with our engineer right now to get the plans together. We haven't even put that out to bid because we had to do after our annual meeting. So we will, the timing of it, I mean, it may not happen this summer. The piping project that we have to get done is happening June 15th. That was the big thing. The other part of it, so we're working very closely with the bond council, our engineer, because we're not sure we can get all the parts and get that project done. This summer. So there's options with the bond bank, they have another sale in January. So just the timing of all that, we're just trying to work out. But in the meantime, we still need to, at the next meeting, we still need to, if we, we still have to have some votes and agreements signed in case we move forward this July with the bond bank. If we don't, we'll just push it to the next sale. So we have to get that paperwork up in order so we can bring that to you at the next meeting too. I think that's it. Busy time of year.
My understanding is there's no principals reporting this evening?
No principals are reporting now.
And so superintendent?
Yeah, that is, I just wanted to let you know that you have your community reports in your package, you have your wellness, you have risk management, and your minutes, they've already been reviewed. We just, we discussed the minutes recently and so we wanted you all to have a pop, stop me at that. Also, you will be looking at quite a few policies and the policy committee has been very busy. And what we are trying to do is finish up the, the policies that were required by the state and also those that have to be posted and sent to all parents. So which, how we do that is we put it through the student parent handbook. So we're getting those policies ready to go through the student parent handbook and we'll be moving forward with that process. So you will be getting an abundance of policies that we've been reviewing throughout the weeks in between board meetings. Yet we do have the, the reopening plan, we can just talk, but you have another agenda item for the reopening plan. Just wanted to let everyone know that, that we have, we are at the beginning stages of the strategic plan, the one that we had started a year and a half ago when we had stopped because of COVID. We did have a meeting this morning with the consultant and we will be moving forward. We still have to figure out a time, schedule a time where we have quite a few community members that will be involved in this, which is really good. And so we will be starting with that. And Mark Dolan, who's a consultant, had said that he still predicts that we could have this strategic plan done by August, mid-August even, so that we can use it, you know, from the beginning of the school year. So that will be, that will be a big thing. And the rest we can talk about as we go through the agenda.
Okay. So committee reports and a, let's start with the facilities this evening.
Yeah.
Deb kind of covered them. We had a couple.
Sorry, yeah, sorry.
Deb mentioned that the gap that the piping project's going to go forward, just a date for that, that's June 15th is the estimated start time, depending on weather and things like that. Estimated start time for the roofing project is the third week of July, again falling into construction schedules. But they only estimate a week and a half of work, but kind of just sending out big gangbuster teams right now and just doing the work. Those are the two big projects for the summer. A couple of other things that, you know, Mark has gone on includes like our windows and such in general work. I mentioned last time, he's focusing on exterior because due to COVID, he got to spend a lot of time in the building this year, this past year. As far as the painting and stuff goes, you know, just, you know, they can put some time and focus into the exterior of the building, which they typically don't get to do as much in the summertime because they're chasing the tails to get ready to open again. So that's cool. We talked about a walkthrough, which we mentioned last week and then just, I mean, at the last facilities meeting. But to make it easier, you know, we just kind of talked amongst ourselves and we decided that the next meeting, which typically would have like policies going on, we're just going to come an hour early, myself and Joe and Mark, and just if we can get it done in an hour, we will. And then if not, we're just going to continue our tour and our whole walkthrough of the property, you know, going on for the next meeting, just to kind of stretch it and, and give opportunity for us to make it here. Deb mentioned the bonding, so that process is just in the works with HPC and we're just kind of plugging along with it. And the only other big thing was the air quality had been brought up recently, or well, we had been working on that and that, you know, we did receive a preliminary report and which just came in till we kind of like were doing that and going through that and thinking of our next steps of where we go with that process. I think that kind of covers everything unless there's something you want to add, Joe. Yeah, it was pretty, pretty short, but I mean, it's cool that we have our, this time, this time of year is good because we have our plans for the summer pretty much. We'll move forward, so thank you.
So with regards to the risk management and the wellness committee, is there anything that you wanted to add beyond what's in the report that we received?
I think the wellness committee is talking about maybe meeting again before school gets out. And the minutes from the last meeting, which was in March, were posted. There was a virtual cooking class for helping cooking that got great reviews. Dory Reedon led that. She was psyched to do it. She's psyched to do it again. And then the week of soups and salads, I wasn't present in the school, but it sounded like it was.
Risk management, is there anything else? It, it looks like that meeting happened a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, and, and we did a walkthrough of both buildings and any issues, and there really weren't too many, were brought up to the administration and the administration put out to address those issues.
So policy committee.
So like Judy mentioned, there's a lot of policies that were reviewed, both on the policy meeting, May 12th and on May 19th. There's a lot of new policies recommended from the National New Hampshire School Board Association and then some revisions recommended. Our meeting minutes provide a pretty good summary of our discussions, many discussions we've had about them. There's also a number of policies that we are withdrawing based on their recommendation, because they're either duplicated or replaced. And in our policy meeting minutes as well, I noticed that Sharon had added when the policy is being withdrawn, what it's being replaced with, which is helpful. And it also should be noted that the, any policies withdrawn, so everything now is on first reading and we're moving it to second reading. So any policies that will be withdrawn, won't be withdrawn until every, every policy goes through. And policies that are withdrawn will be held on record indefinitely. So I can make a motion to move these policies to second reading.
Thank you.
Let me find my little. Okay, so, okay. So I'll make a motion to move the following policies from first to second reading. AC, ACE, ACD, ADC, BGAA, EEA, AR, EEA, IHBH, IKE, KEE, JIC, JICC, JICCR, JICD, JICDD, JICJR, JJIC, JRA, DJ, BG, BGA, BGB, BGC, BGE, GBED slash JICG, JIA, JICI dash R. Oh, those are to be withdrawn. Thank you. Sorry about that. From BG through JICIR. I also wanted to mention too, like Judy had mentioned, one of the, the policy committee has met an extra time just in preparation to get the student handbook out and get these policies rolling.
I will second Jasmine's motion.
We get, we get a second from Joe.
Sorry, I didn't hear you, Joe.
That's fine.
So.
I, I have one question though, before you call your vote. I had asked about the ELO policy in particular, with, with the policies that having to do with specific teachers or coordinators, were those run by those teachers or coordinators? I know at the last meeting, it hadn't been done yet, but have we done it since?
It looked like that from your, your superintendent note. Yes, that'll be protocol.
Yeah, we contacted the staff whenever any of them applied to specific areas. The staff does then get a copy of the policy at the end. But while we're going through the process, if there are any questions and it impacts any particular program, that particular staff member is notified. As noted.
And we get input from that staff member?
Yes.
Perfect. Fantastic. Thank you.
I had a question about JICJ dash R. It's the responsible use of electronic devices policy. And there had been some discussion in previous years about changing that for middle schoolers. There was, then it was sort of temporary or sort of piloted, I think, last year, 2019, 2020. Piloted for the kids to see how they would do with that. You know, with the idea that we were going to receive some feedback in the future from staff, and they came in once, but it was sort of a little bit early on. You know, we were hoping to, I think as, I was in the policy committee at the time, we were hoping to sort of hear some feedback from teachers about whether or not, they thought it was unofficial or after the year it's concluded. And I think probably that's sort of a loss in the shuffle of COVID at the end of the last year. And we sort of, you know, we never really got to discuss that. And I don't think that it's ever been changed. And my reading of what's here doesn't sort of make that distinction between middle school and high school. Is that?
Right. The, the middle school is a little more restricted with the phones. However, they still use them, the electronic devices, which is a phone. They still use them when, when the teachers need them for a specific lesson or when they're giving some type of specific lesson. They're a little more structured with that at the beginning of their sixth grade years and between sixth, seventh and eighth, they gradually give them a little more independence with them, but it's very gradual. And so that by the time they get to high school, you know, it's, it's a little less structured. The other electronic devices, any other electronic devices, they don't have one a once. So they've, they've been working with the meeting, it's the laptop and Chromebook. So they have been giving, you know, working with them on and that's been an instructor environment, you know, and showing them how to respect the technology and how to use it respectfully. So that has been working. Before it was a little, I mean, not, I don't want to say non-structured, but non-structured so that they could have them whenever they wanted and, and using them sometimes inappropriately. And so when they brought that, raised that in, it seems to be working much better now. But, but it's not completely, no phones, no electronic, no nothing. It's definitely something that, that has been working for teachers and students in that particular grade level.
So this policy says students, should there be another policy for, are they not following this policy? There's more restrictions to this for the junior highs. Should there be a separate policy for sixth, seventh and eighth or?
Well, there was a proposed revision last, now last year, year before, summer 2019, basically, or actually right around this time in 2019, to change the middle school policy to basically no devices at all at any time during the school. And except when, except when it's like a structured activity in the classroom. And they, they sort of imposed that, even though the policy wasn't changed. But we decided eventually just to sort of pilot that to see how that worked out. But this, I mean, I think it sounds like you prefer to keep the structure that they're doing in the middle school. And, and keep it so that, so that it's a lot more limited. But I mean, I, I think if that's the plan, then the policy should reflect that. I think it's, and I also, my understanding of what was happening or what happens in the school anyway, is that sort of the restriction on use of personal electronic devices in the hallways between seven and 2:30 is not really enforced in the high school. And so if we're not going to enforce it, we shouldn't have it written in the policy. You know, so I, you know, this is then it's sort of an ongoing discussion over the course of a couple of years. And I think we should make the policy clear so that when somebody reads it, they know what they are.
So is it being pulled off on moving JICJ dash R?
Well, I mean, isn't this, the point of, the point of this discussion is to send it back to the policy committee so that they can make additional changes if you want to and then bring it back for the final review. So I think that we can, we can do that. We can still move to second and if you guys.
And we're still reviewing.
And if you, if to me, it doesn't feel like it's appropriate at that time to bring it forward at the next meeting for final review, then, then that's a decision for you guys to make. But I, I think we can move it forward. I just think that it needs to be looked at to address. Yeah, just clarify what's going on. I mean, I think there was, I mean, I know personally, I had some hope that we would have a more robust discussion about what we were doing with the students in the middle school. And, you know, I think that there was some concerns that I had about, about the, some of the justifications for treating his middle school differently than the high school when it comes to the phones. But, you know, I, I do think that we need to have, regardless of which way we decide to go, we need to have it be a policy that's, that we're actually enforcing and that it's what, it's what we want it to be. Right. If we want it to be middle school's more restricted, let's say middle school is more restrictive. If we want to, you know, say otherwise, then that's fine. And, you know, and work in discretion to the extent that we want there to be discretion in the policy.
No, definitely. And the policy committee can do that and we'll come back at the next meeting.
That's a good point.
I have one question and another call. On a policy ACD, it says the board understands that administration and staff must recognize students' First Amendment religious rights subject to reasonable rules and regulations. Are these reasonable rules and regulations written down somewhere or is this up to like administration's interpretation of what they are? Do you know that? Is that even, did I even say that right? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, I think if the policy tries to be broad.
Okay.
And, you know, there are several different scenarios that you could come across and you can never expect a certain scenario to happen. So I'm trying to keep it.
So it would be administration reason. Okay, that, no, that's what I was.
Yeah, that's, there is a reason for those words.
And, and I think the, the thrust of this and the why it's so sort of nonspecific is that, number one, there's a million different religions with a million different beliefs. It's hard to anticipate everything that would come up. But also, you know, like every other constitutional right, the right to practice your religion is not absolute and it has to be within, it has to be within reason. So, you know, we can't have a practitioner of some Native, Native American religion doing KOD in science class, you know. So we're allowed to make some reasonable restrictions. Those, you know, I don't think that it's possible in one particular policy to anticipate a potential thing. So.
I was just wondering whose interpretation that was, the final decision was, was that administration superintendent doesn't really specifically?
I would expect that. And, and I think that's probably been the case, that if there's a religious freedom issue or a religious practice issue that comes up, that that's discussed at the, by the administration.
That's what I was.
For sure.
That's all.
Any further discussion on these policies, Tammy?
Nope, I'm good.
Thank you. All right. If there's no further discussion, then we will take a vote to move the policies, the policies mentioned, the motion to second reading. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, Tammy?
Yes, aye.
I'm an aye, Joe.
Aye.
Right?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. And so, like you said, we'll just wait on the withdrawal until everything gets, yeah, okay. Is that it from the policy team?
Yeah.
Good job. Staff nominations, resignations and recommendations?
There were none.
Nothing? Continuing business outstanding under new business. So continuing business, town Lincoln and then it's Denise Herden easements.
That, that is still a communication between the two attorneys. And he was hoping he would have, you know, something to give to the board tonight and he didn't have the time. So the next board meeting, I'm sure that's something.
Superintendent evaluation, I will pick that one up. I have now received two evaluations.
Where, do I pick it up at the?
This, it was emailed to all the members?
I have on my desk.
Okay, just, you can either email it to me or you can hand it to me or you can drop it off at the, in a sealed envelope at the office and I'll come pick it up. But the plan is, and I think that's what we've done in the past, is I take all of them, sort of just compile them in a way that makes all of them anonymous and then, and then submit the report to Judy, so she can have it. But we just need to, eventually that needs to happen. So.
I wrote my name on it, I was gonna source it.
It's fine, it came to me.
Okay.
No one's. And I'd also like to thank Joe for being the first to get it done. So COVID-19, you addressed.
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate a little bit and piggyback what Deb had said, was the reopening plan committee did meet this past Monday. And they have a, the committee itself is represented by all different levels of classroom, teachers, special teachers, administration, and we do have a medical consultant on, on board as well, and board member. And we did meet on Monday to go through the, the different areas that we're, we were looking at to review and, and change, make changes to. And what we will do with that is take that information and then we will be developing a draft reopening plan. And then we will send it out to the board and we will also send it out to the public. So that will be on the website, that will be everywhere and the public can, can review it and read it through and see what their, their feelings are about that. Then on the next meeting, June 9th meeting, like we did last year in March, I believe it was, or April. We went through that reopening plan. Well, we're going to do it again and take the input from parents and community members. What we will be asking for from the public is input prior to the meeting, if they attend. I mean, they can read it, they can email it, you know, information, they can do, do it any way they want. But they can also give information at that particular meeting on June 9th. And then we will, the committee will get back together and put that together and then present to the board to vote on.
Okay, so as far as timeline is concerned, they met this week. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just thought of something. When we, when we go through all of the information. Um, when we, when we go through all of the information, if we, if if the board decides to add whatever input they get that evening on June nine, as well as with the plan, we give you a hard copy of a plan. Community members come, they add more information. If the board decides that that's what they want to put into the plan, add to the plan. The board could vote on the plan on June nine. So we have to send it in by June twenty third to the state.
Okay, so we need a vote on June nine?
That would be very helpful. Yes, the next meeting is until June twenty third.
Okay, well, I mean, we may just have to schedule another here, another meeting. I just don't know that it's realistic to expect that we'll be able to take everything that everybody has to say on that night and then come up with amendments to the plan. Plus, I I don't really see that as the board, the board's job. I think that that's the opening committee's. So they're going to take the comments.
Right.
They're going to make the amendments and present it back to us. And I, I mean, is that, I think that that makes the most sense. Because there, I mean, you folks in the administration and the opening committee has been, you know, deep in this stuff for a year and a half now. So if we can have the sort of that feedback session. And then some, a another meeting with the reopening committee. And then we can schedule even a virtual meeting if necessary, just to say, yes, that all looks fine. Let's put, let's, let's submit that.
That would be very helpful.
I would prefer to do it that way than to try to, you know, make amendments and and make adjustments if if we feel that's warranted. And, you know, particularly if the if the whole reopening committee isn't going to be able to hear, be here on that June ninth meeting to give their input on on that. So certainly think that that's. You know, and I'm sure we can get a forum with people together for that. But just timeline, when do you expect to have first draft?
The first draft we will have, um, by the end of this week. We're having a meeting tomorrow to review the the changes that everybody made so that we can enter and put those up to. I would say by beginning of next week, we will have a draft and we'll send it out to all board members.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll post it online.
Okay, that's a good question.
On the website.
So the idea would be hopefully, um, the draft, uh, we get the draft beginning next week, we have time to get feedback from community members that have concerns about that. That can be either, some of those can be either addressed at that meeting or we can take additional feedback at that June ninth meeting. We'll have a subsequent, or the reopening committee will have a subsequent meeting, that we will have a subsequent meeting prior, and then that all has to happen prior to June twenty third. Okay, I think we just have.
Just to get that draft to the state.
Drafting states.
And the state knows that things will most likely change. I mean, we have to put that in when we actually reopen in the fall.
Right. And obviously, a lot of things change over the summer.
Of course.
Yeah. Yeah. New Hampshire is a state where vaccination rates are good and and, you know, cases are dropping. So we can hopefully be in a much better position to assess the sort of on the ground reality of it at that time. But June twenty third is a Wednesday. June ninth is a Wednesday. So we'll have two weeks to to make all that happen. And maybe we'll just do
May, uh, sixteen?
Either, uh, either on the sixteenth, which is a Wednesday, or, um, we could either even meet Monday or Tuesday prior to the twenty third. Okay. Okay, that that makes sense. Uh, and thank you for all the work that you guys have been doing on that reopening committee. That's a lot.
Jay, I'm just curious, is that committee meetings open to the public?
That was actually a question I meant to ask.
Yes.
Yes, the the one.
The reopening committee meeting?
The reopening committee meeting.
The one that's tomorrow?
Oh, no, no, that, no, that's just for us to revise, but what was given to us, we're just going to sit down and revise that. That's not even a meeting.
Okay, so the next, the next thing that will be open to the public where we'll be discussing the plan is June nine.
June nine.
And that will have a specific agenda item for, uh, public input regarding the.
The other committee meetings open online or?
The other reopening plan committee?
Uh, I don't think so.
I don't know.
They were at the school, so we didn't necessarily, I didn't record any, could we record that? Yeah, last, no, no. Yeah.
So, um, can we just make clear when you put the plan out? It's the draft, that it, we're putting it out specifically to solicit feedback from the community. And and sort of set a deadline that gives the board time prior to that June ninth meeting for people to submit their comments. I know that we're also going to be accepting comments that night, but it would be nice to have, you know, if if folks had, you know, stuff that they wanted addressed, that that we would have an opportunity to look it over correctly. So if we can just make make it clear that what the timelines are, sort of like how the, how we plan to proceed with it, you know, and and sort of just ask the public to, um, if they can, put their, put their commentary in writing so that we can have, we can be better prepared, be better prepared to address it at the June ninth meeting.
So if it's going to be presented early next week, like June first, because Monday is a holiday, and then, um, then public, um, can provide feedback until like the seventh, and that will give us a couple of days?
That makes sense.
Monday.
Yeah, that's. Or just maybe that Friday or that, how about that close of business Friday? We could just ask, you know, obviously, it's not a hard pressed deadline because they can make comments. It would be nice to just help, you know, encourage folks to to provide their commentary so that we have time to review it.
I'm sorry, do you want more?
Yeah.
Just real quick, where should we send information if we have to?
Superintendent.
There's an email right there.
Just, just write to you, Judy?
Yeah. No, we have the community box.
Immunity at land dash wood dot com.
Okay, so that's what.
But it will be on the website with the plan.
Okay, awesome.
And that has, does that also list who's on the opening committee?
It's in the plan.
So if I go to, um, the school website and meetings, they'll, they'll list for me the plan and then all the names of the people on the reopening committee?
It's under the COVID tab on the.
Okay.
Website and then the plan itself. Currently, the current plan is there.
Well, I see, I've seen the current plan. I haven't seen updated anything.
Right.
That's what we expect to have out by next.
Updated is not yet.
Right. That's the, hopefully, Tuesday.
Cause it's for next year.
Awesome.
Any other COVID nineteen related issues?
No.
So just actually, it's sort of COVID nineteen. The S R grants, they were giving seven hundred eighty two thousand dollars in S R grants?
Yeah, and and the big reason for doing this reopening plan is so they can release the funds.
Yeah.
Because we're supposed to be planning on how we're going to reopen schools. That'll be reopened. We've been open, but a lot of schools need to do some, I mean, we're getting a lot of money, but there's schools that are getting
Millions.
Millions, like Berlin's getting seven or eight million dollars because there's probably some major modifications that they got to do within their schools to return safely.
And is it?
We're fortunate.
Is it part of the, part of the thought, you know, maybe this is, facilities committee question, but part of the thought is that we had talked about updating, upgrading the system that was going to be put in this building to include like the ultraviolet sanitation equipment or something. Um, is.
Yes and yes.
Okay, so that's.
If we can do that with, the timing of all this is, any, any facilities, and we just learned this today, any facilities upgrades that we're going to do, we need to have a plan, have it designed, send all the designs and plans to the Department of Ed, even though we're getting this money.
Yeah.
They have to approve all that with their, before we can use this money for that. So then.
Yes.
I mean.
What about other recommend, recommendations or ways that we wanted to spend the money? Like, for example, um, if, you know, masks are going to be required, purchasing, um, see-through masks, which are really effective, especially for for younger students, but things like that, like, when could we make recommendations on that?
Well, the other thing is part of using this money is getting input from stakeholders. Um, and again, we we kind of set some things up and as we're learning more. But one of the things we can maybe put it as an agenda item on here, again, give you the documents and say, these are the specific areas. Like maybe P P E and and things like that, cleaning supplies. We, we bought a lot of that this year. We've got our funds that you can see, you know.
Can, can, can we, um, put it out to the folks that know best about where where they think that we need to spend the money? So for example, for the facilities committee, identify some projects that are sort of COVID related, which I think like this sanitation of the air system would be perfect. And then, you know, for Mark, if there's any additional sanitation stuff.
Yeah, he's definitely been looking at all that stuff with us.
And then, you know, educationally, and I know you said that sort of percentage has to be used for sort of catch up, um, educational services. You know, is there, is there somebody looking at where where would we best be served by spending the money there?
And also. And also with the idea of see, see through that clear masks, the social emotional piece that is so impacted by COVID, so looking into funding that. They're more expensive, obviously, but they're, um, beneficial.
Would we give this money if we weren't asking our kids, is this all contingent on masking our students?
Uh, none of it is.
No. So we don't have to mask the kids either. What were the strings attached to this seven hundred eighty two thousand dollars?
Well, I think that.
And from whence does it come? Is it federal or state?
It's federal.
Federal.
Federal. This is a new program under, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out when this all began, that these monies would be uh, provided for schools for certain, and what exactly is the, like, COVID related?
It's all COVID related.
Pretty broad.
It's all COVID related. They gave us like, I think, like fifteen broad bullet
Of course.
categories, uh, you know, again.
And you could, you could do like C R T, you could like provide anything you wanted to within this, with this money?
Well, it has to be approved.
Approved by whom?
The people that are giving us the money.
The D, like by the federal government. So they're giving it to you and you have to, okay. So it's not dependent on anything other than they need to approve.
It's dependent on the fact that there's a pandemic. It's, it's emergency related.
We are the lowest, Raptin County is the lowest.
That's it. That's it.
That's, 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 to answer your question, that's what it is. Because it's based on the fact that we're running a school during a pandemic. So they're giving us this relief fund. And that's how we're, and that's what we're trying to figure out how it makes, how it can most benefit our school to reopen in the, in the best way.
Right. So with, so the reopening committee is looking at this seven hundred eighty two thousand dollars and how to best use it for reopen.
No, those are two different things. Those are two different things.
Clear mask for next year. When we right now have a point seven seven.
We're, we're just, I'm going to, we're, we're just throwing out ideas and we're just bouncing off things that are saying like, what could it be used for? It could be used to buy a roof for the building.
I just want to say.
Can you, can you just announce who you are? Cause people are interested in who's speaking. That's what I've got messages for. Could you please announce yourself?
I'll wait.
Yeah, so. Hold on a second. We'll just cut off conversation right now. We, we do have a public input, um, period. It will allow you to to make public comment during the public input period. But you know, where where we can, we can answer some simple straightforward questions. But if you have any, if if you want to know where the S R grants are coming from and what they're all about, all that information is is publicly available. You can find that all online to the Department of Education. So right now, the, the topic of discussion is simply the board inquiring administration as to what areas that they, that we think they consider spending some of that lots. So if, is there any other discussions regarding the the COVID nineteen bullet point and the continuing business?
No, I would just add that if there is anyone who does that specific questions, they can certainly call and set up an appointment. I'll be glad to sit down and go over the whole thing, everything that we're, we're going through and the processes that we follow and in my way to follow them and 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 guide you through where you can get the information on your own as well.
Well, I say you, you receive me, I'm not leaving you back. So I will call your office and speak directly to you and maybe you can have.
Make a point.
That would be great.
I just, I, I know that we say this often, but, um, I just want to thank administration for all their hard work through the pandemic and, um, with with navigating this and also the reopening.
Uh, I think we've discussed strategic plan already, so I think.
I think we're fine.
We're, we're looking forward to, uh, moving forward with that this summer. I mean, that's, that's been a long time coming. Uh, and, um, again, I think I would prefer if everyone else is okay with it to hold off discussions on the advisory budget committee until we have all boards.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so I haven't seen any students and Sharon, you said you had some staff input?
Um, I do, I have a letter from Kate Bossy and Lee Harrington, um, student pastor news. Tom was Saturday, May twenty second, twenty twenty one. With fifty three students in attendance, the theme was V I P red carpet and the kids seemed very packed up a little normal after our crazy year. Dinner was prepared by the common man and the dessert was prepared by the mountain of space. The gym was transformed with dining on one end and dancing on the other. White lights surrounded the stage and along the leechers. Seventy silver and black star Mylau balloons were generously donated by the ladies of the Family Dollar to help make the gym sparkle and the setting shine. Part of the V I P treatment was having a gift card giveaway drawing every fifteen minutes. Two senior boys performed a couple of solo guitar performances to add to the fun. A king and queen were crowned seniors Ivory Bailey and Max Lebon. The night was enjoyed by all the students and chaperones. Thank you to our chaperones, Mark Corbinow, Stephanie Olson, Jess Palm, Sean Hagan, Kristy Duris, Cheryl Salazar, and Joe Bossy.
All right, I'd like to ask also, I'd thank Mark and his crew because there was a lot of cleanup and stuff afterwards and things, Mark.
One of you.
Yeah, there might have been a little.
I'm, I'm glad to hear that the students were able to have some semblance of normalcy this year. It's been a, it's been a challenging year for everybody, so.
They really did have a blast. It was, it was quite an event.
Good to hear. And, community. Yeah. I would, I guess I would remind folks that the community participation is to give feedback to the board. It's not designed to be a question and answer scenario. We frequently do provide answers when we can, if it's feasible. Um, but generally speaking, the idea is the community to have a forum, it's limited to fifteen minutes total, and three minutes per participant. So it's, I will open the floor to community participation at this point? Okay, seeing none?
No, I will.
Oh, okay, sorry. Just, it's close enough to this little weird shake thing so that.
It's a little owl there?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I, I agree with Jasmine that, um, opening the school.
Sorry. We need you to announce yourself.
Oh, my name is Amy Barnaby and I have a fifth grader. My oldest son graduated last year and I have a middle school student who's at home homeschooling right now. I recently re-enrolled my daughter after the emergency. Uh, mask mandates and everything had passed. There's no longer an emergency order in New Hampshire. There are no, uh, ordinances in the town of Lincoln. So I was hoping and and, uh, Principal Everett sent me a thing when I said I wanted to re-enroll my daughter and she said, mask thing is still going. We're not doing the the questions. We're not doing any of that. And I said, all right, fine. We went down to Georgia, we went down to, uh, South Carolina, Florida, all of those. I had never worn a mask. I don't wear a mask. I like wear it for five minutes in and out. My daughter had never worn a mask. We wore masks at Bush Gardens. And I was like, oh, my God, this sucks. This is awful. It's awful. And I thought it was just me, just like, I'm not just, it's awful. So then I started researching all this, the dangers of wearing masks, what we're doing to our children. There are no zero. And I have been in correspondence with a child advocate in New Hampshire about studies on children wearing masks. These are not, not just children, these are asymptomatic, healthy children wearing masks. There's no, you don't have your mask up on your nose right now. I've seen you touching your mask. That is not the proper way. And I've looked at the guidance that y'all did about going back to school. We're going to have masks worn properly. We don't do it properly. None of us, because we can't. It's impossible. You don't take your mask off, wash your hands, take your mask off, put it in a little Ziploc bag, wash your hands again, eat, wash your hands again, take it out, put it on. It's on their wrists. I see them. They don't get washed at night. So to me, I was like, oh, my gosh, I gotta wash this mask every night. Because this mask came in this container right here, and it says, made in China, let you, let you know that. But it says, warning, choking hazard, children can choke. Not intended for medical use and not a replacement for medical grade, personal protective P P E. Remember, we all heard about that at the beginning of this. Why are we masking our children? Can you tell me that, anyone? I emailed you. I haven't heard back from you. I've emailed, uh, Principal Everett, I haven't heard back. I want to know why we're masking our children. If it's for a medical reason, this is not enough. We need to be in this that our children are given. These also say, I, I'm sorry, I'm get, I'm, I'm, it's not right, and I'm, I'm, I'm not like here to attack any of you. We all want what's best for the kids, no one is standing up for the kids, we've got teachers unions for the teachers, we've got a board that I think y'all have children and you want what's best for them, but who is standing up for the children? Who are sitting in their classes, I don't know how many of you go six to eight hours wearing a mask, but that's what we're asking our kids to do, oh, just put it on, do it. So, my time is up, this also is not, if we wanna get, we're spending thirty-three thousand dollars per student N ninety-five masks, if this is really a medical emergency and we're in a pandemic, those masks for five plus twenty dollars. You're gonna buy them for every single student, if it really is a medical emergency and we're concerned about our students. It's really, and, and I have information, I would love to tell you, increased cavities, bacterial infections, the masks hold in the bacteria, that's all I had to say, I, maybe I'll pass off to someone else that. I think you did an awesome job opening, you brought the kids into the school, and that's phenomenal. I have siblings, I have a sister-in-law, brother-in-law down in Portsmouth, they were going through crazy stuff. Their kids are still wearing masks on the playground, we've done an awesome job. I, I don't wanna belittle any of that, and the teachers have done an amazing job, and everybody else, so I don't want you to think I'm, I'm putting you down in any way, I'm concerned, I have concerns, and I just want, y- you can't find this information, you gotta go on Duck 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 Go or something else, because you can't find all the research that says there isn't any research on our children, they are the subjects being.
Thank, thank you for your.
Part of this, thanks.
Any other public comments? Paul? Yeah, I just have, uh, sorry, Paul, if you could just, yeah.
Name's Paul Schirdewan, I just have a, a, a quick follow-up there. Um, yeah, I, I, I also like chiming in, I appreciate everyone opening when they did, and that, that was, that was a pretty brave thing to do in light of what the politics were. Um, I was on the CDC website, and they said herd immunity was between sixty-five and seventy percent. Right now, Grafton County is at seventy-three point nine percent. And, um, also, if you add in the four thousand people who already have COVID, so it's actually, that's a low number, seventy-three point nine, it could be as high as seventy-eight point four percent if you add in the A C F, the M A P people, maybe higher. The CDC said that there is no reason that anyone who's vaccinated needs to wear a mask, period, that. Now, th- there is some stuff in there where they use examples, about fifteen examples, they're on the second page of their uh, site, and it says, uh, one thing that stuck out to me was uh, they can, you can attend a full-service church service, a full, full attendance church service, which to me is much more riskier, quote unquote, than the school is, because you have a much wider population in there. And, um, the old and the young. So, um, you know, I just advocate that we do not need masks, and, um, the infection rates are plummeting right now, we're one of the lowest in the nation, I think, county-wise. And over the summer, we all know it goes down to basically zero. So, uh, why to have them in summer school, I think we can not have it at summer school period, I don't think we need it, certainly for opening, I think it's kinda ridiculous, honestly. And the only thing I'll just cap off is I'm still concerned about not having a formalized summer program for reading and math. I personally asked a school for a, a program, I'm sure I'm not the only parent who wants some sort of reading list or a math list to do over, over summer, there's not one provided by the school. I asked the, uh, the assistant principal, she asked me to contact the out, outgoing and incoming teacher, which would be about six for me, and I'm happy to do that. But it would seem to me, uh, all parents would want something like that, or at least have that available to them. Uh, I never heard of, you know, I'm an old guy, I guess, but we always had reading lists, and we've always coordinated that with the library and had multiple copies of the books ready to read.
Well, are you asking grade-specific or student-specific or just in general?
Um, I'm asking for.
I don't have kids in school now, that's why I'm asking them.
Yeah, well, my kids aren't getting a reading list right now.
That's what I, that's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah, so they are not getting one right now. So I'm asking, you know.
So you, so you mean like a, a book you're supposed to read over the summer?
Right, right. Yeah, yeah, and, and there's lots of them online, and even Zern, which is a math program, they have a canned series. And we have the Zern program in our computers, so there's already canned ser- series in there for grade one, grade two, grade three, grade four, grade five, it's already there. You know, I mean, it's not specific to the student, to my student, my person, but.
That's three minutes, I'll give you a little bit longer since you.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Now, you can go.
Oh, okay, well.
Sorry, you can, just 'cause he was.
Yeah, I'm just, you're just, I'm sorry, just, just wrap it up, so there are definitely things out there. But I, I just find it hard to believe systematically or organizationally that you're asking each parent to go to each teacher on both ends, when I think this is something that has always traditionally been done. And again, the retention rates over the summer, they work so hard to get that information, that knowledge. And all you need to do, you know, and the retention rates are between, you know, thirty and seventy percent loss. And, you know, with the COVID, this is a perfect example of something that you're gonna have a COVID catch-up on, is over the summer learning. So we have the computers already, they have the programs already on there, they already have canned programs for grades one, two, three, four, five, I only stopped the elementary, that's where my kids are at. And they say, these are the summer series programs, so your kids retain knowledge going into next school year. Now, it might seem simplistic, but I don't know why we aren't connecting the dots, at least from my point of view.
Thank you for your.
Okay.
Any additional public comment?
No, I have to ask. Uh, talk of Barnaby, um, I just wanna add to the masks, cause I, I, I hear there's no masks, I hear masks. I think that it's really more important that we look at it as choice. That it's a freedom of choice. We hear that all the time in a lot of things that we do, my body, freedom of choice, the right to bear arms, my choice. The mask, uh, you can do what you want, I believe it is something that we should do by choice. We can even go back to, if we want, our founding fathers fought for freedom of choice. A freedom of choice. And I think that's what, I'm just trying to be said here, I think we, we get emotional, we get going different ways, I think that's what's important that we should look at. If you choose to have your family mask, that's awesome. And I think that's what's going on right now with the governor reducing and saying there is no mandate. I went to three stores in the last two days, and people made the choice whether they wore one or not. It wasn't on the door anymore that you had to. So I think that's what's important that we look at as we go forward. That's all, I wanted to add that. And on the reading thing, I worked at many schools, they always put reading lists and it's always, and they bring stuff back. So it's a great idea. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Uh, seeing none, do we have anything non-public?
I have one thing to say.
Oh, yeah, come on up, please.
Where do you see Danielle McAfee?
Sorry, can you?
My name is Danielle McAfee. Um, the elementary students last week in fifth grade did math testing. And as long as they sat forward, they didn't have to wear a mask. So why was it okay for them to remove the mask during math testing, but for any other day they still have to wear that mask? Can anybody answer that?
I guess, it's not really a question and answer type thing, it's just.
But you're making our children wear a mask, but it's okay if you're taking a test, the COVID goes away, where does it go? Why are they not wearing a mask during testing? They need the N ninety-five if you want it to make effective. These masks that you are all wearing is ridiculous. Stop wearing them, they're not protecting you. And that's what you have to get through your head. You're suffering, our children are suffering because you guys are making them wear these masks six hours a day. And it's ridiculous. All I have to say.
Thank you, thank you for your. I think that's everybody. I will accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Joe. Paul's in favor, Kay?
Yes.
I'm an I, Joe. Brian? Thank you, we are adjourned.